So I wanted to make sure on the security that we, 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 we addressed that. Uh, Dr. Payne, was there anything else that I omitted on the security front?
Um, no, sir. I think you, um, covered it all that we made that, uh, transition from the just not, I won't say just, but with not having only the security company to actually having, um, police officers, um, through the city of Rivendell in Clayton County on all campuses.
Okay. So I think that's real important. So it's, it's, we have, we have licensed police officers with radios and weapons on campus and we've trained with them and they've trained us on what we need to do. And we'll keep doing refresher courses with staff and everybody else is a part of that. So.
And maybe just Mr. Kason, just add that after the unfortunate, um, shooting at Appalachian High School, we was when our board made the decision to not just have just the security company on campus to bring in the, actual licensed, uh, police officers.
Yes, and that's fine. Okay. So those were some questions that were asked and, and, and that's why we wanted to address it. Next topic is a very, uh, uh, topic that is near and dear to me as well as to you as parents. We got, uh, questions on this in terms of the traffic, particularly at our Church Street campus. Um, there are two things I wanted to announce and, uh, what Connor Morris and our board said is we need to be specifics and get to a better understanding of what we need to do. So I want to talk about present. And then I want to talk about future in terms of what we're going to do to make this a better scenario. First of all, uh, I am announcing the establishment of a parent advisory committee that would work with me closely, uh, in, um, Zoom meetings, et cetera, so that we can establish, uh, the best way collectively for you as stakeholders and us to manage and deal with the traffic, uh, the pickup, the drop off and how we would do this. The school has grown. The numbers have indicated particularly on Church Street campus where we are, have the most students and the most drop off with kindergartens and siblings and how we need to be able to do this. So some of the, some of the things that I'm going to be doing or that we're going to do is we are exploring for the future, uh, a, a, a busing scenario, for example, and this is where I need advisory committee to help me, that we would eliminate some of the traffic on the campus by having pickups away from the campus. Now, we don't have the ability yet to go right into your neighborhoods and pick up, but Dr. Payne and I do have a meeting with Dr. Anthony Smith, who is the superintendent of Clayton County Public Schools. And he has agreed to meet with us to discuss opportunities to be able to, uh, work in neighborhoods, maybe bring kids to their zone school. And then we pick those children up from the zone school, bring them to campus. So that is something that is in the works that we're working on. The second thing is to look at, for example, uh, Kroger on, on Highway eighty-five or the Walmart parking lot or Lotte Joy parking lot and Aldi's up on the, up on the north side where we could have designed pickup times where parents could bring those kids to those locations. And then we get on the bus and have to be a little bit earlier than that timeframe, but that we would get and then get those students to school through busing. So again, they will be designed to have enough stops so that we would not be bringing all of the cars to the campus. It still requires partnership and teamwork by parents, but it would allow us to bring kids away from the campus and to the campus in that zone. And that's something that we're looking at. The other thing in talking with Dr. Youssef and our, our team at Church Street, I went out and I witnessed the traffic coming in in the mornings and we start that drive at about seven thirty. Uh, we may look at even trying to do it just a few minutes earlier than that, but from seven thirty till about seven fifty, the flow is very light. There's not a lot of cars coming through. It's a steady flow. And people that get up early and make that happen, that's not a problem. It's when we're trying to get instruction going to eight o'clock and at seven fifty-five, fifty percent, if fifty percent of our community comes at that time, it's impossible. And I'm going to say it's impossible for everybody to get in that building. And that's where we're having some challenges and some safety issues that we've got to deal with, including people leaving their cars and coming to the door. So moms, partners, dads, uncles, grandparents, you can help us by, uh, 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 getting a little bit earlier on that schedule. If you come at seven thirty, seven thirty-five, seven forty, seven forty-five, uh, you'll see that that drop off will be much better in zone and able to come. Uh, in terms of fountain of faith, we do it there a little bit earlier so that you can, if you've got siblings, you can drop off back at Church Street. And then at Main Street, that's a little bit later. And I think we've got that not as bad, but the Church Street scenario has to do with everybody coming at one time, having to do with the number of cars that we put on that campus at one time and getting it there. Now we get it done and you all have been cooperative. Uh, we do need to look at, uh, speed bumps and slowdown signs. Uh, that advisory committee will help me to also, uh, understand, we're working with the city of Rivendell to get flashing lights and speed zone signs and all of that stuff. I just had a conversation last week with them. They made some city changes. We were getting ready to do that and they've changed city managers. And the city has to go to the state. The state has to authorize their police officers to write tickets in those speed zones and put those speed cameras up and everything else. And so we're working on that to kind of slow the process down. We do have police officers in the morning and in the afternoon. And unfortunately, we've had to make some decisions about the afternoon police officer. We're going to work more with the Clayton County Sheriff starting in January because the city of Rivendell was standing. So the times when we had problems in the pickup or the, uh, at the end of the day was when we didn't have a police officer at that corner. Uh, they've coordinated with the DOT about the lights as well. The other thing besides those local pickups that we're going to be looking to do is have a different type of a pickup that will be, uh, that will be, uh, surrounding, um, uh, that will be surrounding, uh, down at, uh, what's the area that I'm talking about? Down in Lovejoy area, maybe at Divine Faith Ministries to have some pickups there as well to try to eliminate some of that traffic. So we're putting a plan together. If you would like to be on that advisory committee, uh, please, um, uh, go to the website. It'll be on the front page and sign up and say we'd like to be and we can't have, um, I'm looking for about ten good folk to help me make some decisions. So we'll choose from that list, but you can sign up as of today, uh, or this evening and on, on, onto that list. If you go to the boys integrity academy dot O R G and it'll say, uh, uh, parent, uh, advisory committee for traffic and just sign up, give me your name, your information and we'll reach out and put that committee together and start those meetings in January. So we can do some, but as you can see, we've thought through some things we can do to help. And I just want to make sure that we continue, uh, to follow up on that. And Dr. Youssef, if you're there, is there anything else you wanted to add, particularly at Church Street? Uh, please do. And then also Mr. Scott, if you had anything else or fountain of faith. Dr. Youssef?
No, sir. Nothing more.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Scott? Okay.
No, sir.
Okay. And Dr. Payne, if you had anything else. Uh, Ms. Jackson, we're going to, we need to close the chat down so we don't get distracted. Okay? Or Mr. Scott, please. Thank you. Make sure that that's closed. Thank you.
Um, no, sir. I just want to say the, we had mentioned the Lovejoy Walmart. I was trying to unmute, but the Lovejoy, um, I mean, the Walmart in Lovejoy was another, uh, location that we were looking at.
Okay. Okay. All right. Very, very good. Yes. So looking at those different locations. Okay. So we can go to the next slide, please. And again, we're incorporating the question that you've asked inside of this. The next area is attendance and tardy. Now we are governed by the state of Georgia and truancy laws. And so this is very important. And we needed to go over the attendance tardy policy because there were some questions about that and how that worked. And we need to uphold the attendance truancy procedures that you familiarize with DIA's attendance policy, which is online at the student parent handbook on page ninety-three. Uh, daily attendance, uh, is treat, uh, is, is important and absences are treated as unexcused until we receive a written excuse note to explain the reasons for the absence. This is by law. Uh, only absences due to illness, immediate family emergencies, court appearances, religious holidays, and you can list it there are considered excused. All excused notes must be submitted to the DI attendance office at, and you could see the attendance email address. Please understand kindergarten first, we, we, we have to treat all of this as important. And our attendance number has gone down a little bit. Uh, in attendance is important, but the law requires us to do certain things. And an unexcused absence actually goes to, uh, 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 a truancy situation because they want to make sure that all kids across the state are attending school. So our hands are tied in terms of following the law. So I wanted everybody to make sure to understand that. All excuse notes, including doctor's note, must be submitted to the attendance office within three days of a scholar returning to school after their absence. If a written excuse note is not received within three days of the scholar's return, the absence will be permanently counted as unexcused. A doctor's note must be provided for all absences of three or more days in a row and for more than nine days of absences due to illness. So that's important. Next slide, please, sir. Thank you. Okay. Truancy. Again, this is a legal requirement that DIA must follow as its own E L A. Uh, parents and guardians have six or more unexcused absences. If you don't get the doctor's note, we are required to refer to the truancy Clayton Juvenile Justice and Department of Family and Child Services. What they are trying to avoid is for a child to go missing and we not have a reason or rationale as to why that child is missing. Again, this is the law. What I'm saying to you is not Craig Kaisans or DIAs or anybody else. This is the law that we have to follow. Uh, you can help with your child's attendance and academic performance by making appointments before, after school on breaks and regularly checking in on your academic progress, behavior, attendance. If there are any issues on scholars consistent, on time, uh, performance, you can contact our social worker, Mr. Jackson, and that is his email address there on the screen for you. If you have any areas of attendance issues, please note that a social worker's job is to call and we to involve the authorities if we continue to see what those issues are. So his calls are important. Attendance is met, is, is creative. And then we need to, as we talked about earlier, be on time and make sure that we have the improvements there. We will make sure that for that traffic policy, uh, we are doing a better job and we will continue to do better to make sure that all of this can come together. But this was important that we shared that with you. Okay. Next slide, please. Okay, Dr. Payne.
Yes, sir. I have it. Uh, good evening again, parents. So again, we had quite a few questions on communication. So we have gone through them and addressed them collectively. I want to start by saying we have, we are making a conscious, uh, effort to make sure that we improve in our communication uh, efforts across the board in all areas. And so we are, uh, that is a, a goal for us to get better in that area. And we appreciate your, uh, your feedback. Let me first start with that the PBIS platform is our uh, platform for communication. And so this is where you will interact and get information, uh, what, uh, things that are going on at school, um, upcoming events, et cetera. Uh, Ms. Lakeisha Ward is the PBIS coach, uh, for our district. And so if you're having challenges with getting the communications or getting set up on PBIS, you can email Ms. Ward at L Ward, that's W A R D at D I A K eight dot org. Again, that's L Ward at D I A K eight dot org. And so she would troubleshoot the challenges. In some cases, um, some of the questions said that the teachers were not, um, using the PBIS platform. And so when Ms. Ward went in and did some investigation, we found out that there were some situations where parents were did not, uh, were not accurately, um, access, assessing the message center of the PBIS app. And so messages were there. Parents were, were just not aware on how to retrieve those messages. Uh, I do want you to know that we are going to schedule in January. We had one just here recently, but we're going to schedule another PBIS training for parents as well as an infinite campus training for parents. After the new year, we will be getting those scheduled and we'll get that information, um, out to you so that you can attend and have that information and be able to navigate in those, uh, communication platforms. If you go into the message center and you don't see any messages from your, uh, scholar's teacher and you've been reaching out and you have not received any commi- communication, I ask that you please email your scholar's principal. If you're in the K five, that is Dr. Uh, Youssef and she will, uh, get with the teacher and support in making sure that they're able to communicate um, through this platform. If it's the middle school, that will be Mr. Scott. And again, he will make sure that you get the support that you need to make sure that the communication, you or the teacher, whoever the support is needed. So I want to go to the next slide and we're going to show this quick video. Few minutes. This is the family app. Okay? Can we share it with sound?
Yeah, that's okay without the sound. We can kind of go through it, uh, because we take it back down. But, uh, what's important here is that the parents enter the information and in a few minutes, you're going to see on the screen the message. And this is where the parent was looking for the message that come, you don't get a ding that says there's a message there. You have to actually go into the app and check it, but you'll see here, once you register and you submit and this is where you hit submit. And then there is a person, uh, that shows your child, you click on that. And then now you see messages. When you click on the message, that's where you see, uh, the difference, uh, message from teacher. You can also send a message in that platform. So many of us, because we didn't have the, the things that, that Dr. Payne is talking about, the tutorials, et cetera, not understanding how that did. Some of the questions were addressed around that. So, uh, it is important, uh, that you be able to know that. And we're going to be doing that next semester, uh, and having opportunities to understand in that communication log and how that would work. So that'll be important. So everybody can understand that. The next, uh, Mr. Scott, if you want to go, go back, please. Uh, I want, I want to go ahead and go to the student. If you want to talk about that, Mr. Scott, just what the student can do with it, please, if you don't mind. You had to come off mute, Mr. Scott, if you're going to talk through it.
Good evening, everyone. The sound is actually playing on my, uh, laptop here.
Uh, but that's.
Go ahead, sir.
Go ahead, go ahead.
As you can see, students are able to check their PBIS points that they're receiving for exhibiting the expectation in our school. We utilize the SOAR matrix. So S stands for safety, O for ownership, A for acting with integrity and R for responsibility. And if they have access to the school store, they're able to make purchases in the school store as well. And so in this app, they're able to see if they received a minor referral. They're able to see their PBIS balance. They're able to also, um, do different check-ins as you can see on here with their, um, purchases, events, raffles, and different things that's taking place in our school.
Okay. Just leave it right there. Leave that screen, Mr. Scott, for just a moment. Uh, I, I want to reiterate what Dr. Payne has said and very important that many of our questions from our parents, and I need all of our staff and stakeholders to hear this, is in the communications area. And I implore our principals, our deputy superintendent, all of our assistant principals, that the parents want to know and be, uh, transparent what we're doing. Uh, Dr. Payne, I don't know where you're going to talk about some of the, the map data. You're going to cover that.
Well, no, I'm going to, I'm going to talk about some more communication before we go on to the next topic. So yes, I said.
We need to stay there and let her talk about this because this one was the most important piece that we had and we need to keep these systems in place. And then I realized that for some of the families, just understanding the PBIS, understanding the system, I also need to give you additional email address. And that's the one that's just info at the boys integrity academy dot com. If you feel that you're not getting reached and not being heard, you need to email so that we can make sure we get back to you and make the right phone calls with, at the teacher level, at the, at the nurse level, at every level that we can, so that we can address. This is, was the most important thing that you have expressed to us. And I'm telling you, in this town hall meeting, we will continue to strive to be better and make sure we're better communicators with you as, as families. Dr. Payne?
Okay. Yes, sir. Thank you. Again, um, we're going to have those trainings in the, uh, after the first of the year. And so another, uh, concern was that the parents are receiving, um, communications from the teachers about behaviors. Um, and not so much academically. Uh, I will tell you that my principals on both sides at the elementary and the middle school are very diligent. And the assistant principals working with them at checking infinite campus, making sure that teachers are posting the required amount of grades each week, making sure that the communication logs are being updated. And so they are working to make sure that that is happening. I am going to, uh, meet with the principals tomorrow. We have our, um, our monthly meeting. And so on our upcoming ELBC day, when we return after the break, we will reiterate and work with our teachers again to put forth that extra effort to give calls on good things. One of the things the parents said they receive, um, concerns about behavior, but they don't receive positive calls. And I know that's important. Uh, I remember as a teacher, I had to put forth that extra effort to try and give those positive calls. So that's something that we will, uh, work on with our teachers and helping them communicate, uh, positive behavior of positive things that are happening as well. But I can assure you that my administrators on both sides of the, uh, spectrum, the elementary and the middle school are very diligent with checking those grade books, checking those communication logs. We did have last semester, we had in-person parent conferences. We have, um, online parent conferences and parents at any time you can request a conference with your scholar's teacher. So you can, um, set that up and have, um, a conference at any time that you would, well, time that works for both you and the teacher when they're not teaching. Um, we can have that. We can make sure that those are getting scheduled. So that is happening. Again, we will have training on infinite campus, uh, as well. So we're working to increase that positive, uh, communication behavior and just getting better all around. There was also, um, questions that came in about getting test scores. And I assure you that we are going to reach out to infinite campus, um, today. If it didn't happen today, uh, tomorrow, to make sure to see if there's a way that we could upload the milestone scores into the, uh, parent portal. When you go in and see the report card, that you could also get those, uh, milestone scores. So we're going to work on that as well as, uh, Dr. Youssef mentioned today that there's a great parent letter that goes with the map data. So we will be getting those out as well so that you will have those. And then you will get a message through PBIS letting you know parents that map data has come home in your child's book bag today. Please make sure you check, uh, their book bag for those, uh, scores. So we're going to, um, make sure we get that done. Um, we spoke with our executive director about it and he has made a commitment, Mrs. Kason has made a commitment that we're going to, uh, get those scores printed off, get them in the book bags and get them, uh, home to you. And we will communicate to you when that, um, those scores are coming home. There was also a concern about, um, particular, um, uh, scholars who have lost their workbooks and were not able to complete their assignments. I'm going to ask you, uh, parents, if that is your situation, please email the principal because at no time, uh, is it appropriate or is it the expectation at the boys integrity academy for a scholar to be in the classroom and not being able to do work because they have lost, uh, their work. But we do have, uh, resources to make copies or whatever needs to be done. So if that is a situation that has occurred, I encourage you to reach out to your principal, Dr. Youssef or Mr. Scott, uh, if it is the middle school. Okay? Um, that's it for the communication. We can go to the next slide. Oh, wait a minute. I'm sorry. One more. There was concerns about, um, reporting injuries and illness. Now, one of the things we are working and correcting are some of our teachers have such a great relationship with their parents. If a scholar is not feeling well in the classroom, they have made calls to the parent to say the scholar is not feeling well. Please, uh, come to the school and pick them up. That is not the protocol that we've set in place. That is not the expectation at DIA. And so we have reiterated to, uh, all of our staff to make sure that they send them to the nurse. If there's an incident, the nurses, uh, will be contacting the parent directly if they need to be picked up or if there was an incident or an injury. The administrators will be notified and the administrator or the nurse will be the person that will be contacting, uh, the parents. So we, uh, have addressed that concern and we will continue to monitor that to make sure that is, uh, happening. I'm ready for the next slide now. Uh, teacher changes. It is very unfortunate, um, in the middle of the year when we have to, uh, teachers leave or we have to release teachers in the middle of the year. It is not our, uh, expectation. It is not, uh, what we desire to happen, but in some cases, uh, personnel related matters, we're not at liberty to discuss. Some changes, uh, and Mr. Kason has this, uh, saying that he says it's personal living business. Life happens and life, as they say, is life is life and for many people in many different, uh, areas. And so when those things happen and a, uh, teacher makes decisions to leave, um, the profession or to make a change or to relocate, those are things that are totally out of our control. This year has been a little rough, but these, again, these are, uh, challenges that life have, has dealt and we have to roll with the punches and make the adjustments as quickly as possible. We do make a commitment that we will send home a letter in the email first before sending home with the scholar. So to give parents time to have those conversations with the scholar and help with that adjustment. And so this has, uh, been a challenge, but again, many of the challenges are out of our control. One of the biggest challenges that we have faced as a charter school since our inception with teacher turnover is competing with large districts that have a lot more dollars that they can pay teachers. We do our very best. We try to be as competitive as we can with the budget that we have. But the reality is, uh, district, uh, like an Atlanta public school that gives an eleven percent raise that they did last year was a phenomenal astronomical amount for many people. And we did lose a lot of, of teachers. Even and as the year has, uh, progressed, unfortunately with the PSC, there is a clause that, uh, a teacher can, uh, get out of their contract for more money, especially if this is promotion or something of that sort. So those are areas that we are going to continue to work hard to be, uh, as competitive as we can. But those are some of the challenges that we are facing when it comes to, uh, teacher turnover. Also, um, one of the concerns, we have our scores for twenty twenty-four and the scores that we had in twenty twenty-three versus twenty twenty-four, which is just one year, but there was a significant decrease in content mastery, readiness, gap closure and progress across the board. Uh, K eight, I will say that the elementary school, the dip was a lot, uh, deeper. And so in this process, we are in a turnaround process and it is not, um, it's not abnormal for things like this to happen. Do we like it? No. But I promise you, we have, I have the right leaders in place that are going to, uh, turn things around and get us moving back in the right direction. And in that process, it can be very rocky. Change is not easy. However, I promise you with the systems and processes that are being put in place and the accountability that's being put in place, we're going to move back in the right direction. We're going to continue to soar. We're going to move scholars. And it changes difficult and challenging and can often be met with a lot of resistance. But we're going to push through it and continue to do what we need to do for scholars.
I, I just want to add, Dr. Payne, again, um, uh, our board has wanted to make sure that candidly there were some, uh, some steps in our communication early on, particularly at our third grade level that we have addressed. Uh, there were some things that were beyond our control, but we do have the best interest to make sure that parents know before kids know, we knew that that happened and occurred. And that's an area that Dr. Payne has expressed, our communication is important to make sure that that happens. And without, without explaining, you can understand this is a difficult time across the board for families, uh, for the economy. Uh, we have, uh, teachers that have had to leave out of the state to go take of, take care of an elderly, uh, mom or something because the, they, they, they just don't have the right insurance. And there's all different types of things that happen, uh, as Dr. Payne has said about the living business. We also understand that you and your families is why we're having this, uh, uh, this, this town hall meeting or so to speak, or those questions have come in and we're very concerned about our community. We're very concerned about, uh, when, when we have in our before and after care, the number of working parents that entrust us with your children is very, is very high. So I know, uh, we've had families go through, um, uh, fires and go through homelessness and go through a lot of the different things. And just as you all do that as families, our teachers and our staff have the same challenges and issues. as working uh moms and dads and all of those elements. So this is a a very unique and challenging dynamic across the board. But I wanted to make sure that you understood as families that we work constantly to make sure our communications is correct, that we do the best in terms of we worked hard at at filling the gaps. We've had to uh have some people kind of carry over and step in. And and for the most part, our staff and our people have done that, and we want to continue to work and 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 just know that when we started this thing in 2015, that same ever, I still get up at four o'clock in the morning and we go down to paint all the way through to make sure that we're doing the right things. And we will get better and keep and keep going in this direction.
And let me just add, Mr. Kaysan, on that note, um um, I would tell you, I, when I tell you impressed, that is an understatement. Um, through these um challenges that we've had, especially uh at third grade and then one of our second grade classes in particular, uh Dr. Yusef submitted a schedule since the Dr. Payne, I would teach the class. I said, Dr. Yusef, you're the principal. She said, that's okay. I'm going to go in and teach the class because teaching is what I do. I am a teacher. Dr. Yusef, Ms. Jackson, Ms. Jones, Dr. Gilbert, our deans of students all have been pushing in, making sure that those classes are being taught and those students are receiving instruction with fidelity. And I'm gonna tell you, I've been in education my entire adult life over 30 years. And all of the schools I've ever worked in, never can I say a principal that I served under went into the classroom and taught a class and took a, I mean, just a whole block, not just popping in, doing the, I mean, did a lesson plan, went in, I'm teaching the reading block at this time, met with the entire leadership team and said, look, this is what we have to do and this is what leaders do. And so at this time, Ms. Jackson, I need you to come over and teach this math block. Ms. Um uh Murdoch, Ms. Our instructional coaches, uh all of them, Ms. Jones, Mr. Saunders, all of them jumped in uh and have been teaching those classes while we uh secure certified teachers in those classrooms. So I just want to give a shout out to this leadership team to let them know, that the parents know that we are very serious about making sure that our scholars are getting the instruction, even if it means the entire leadership team rolling up their sleeves and going in to teach those classes.
Dr. Payne, I have one other in my note uh 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 to address the fifth grade. We had a a couple of questions on that. I know just to let parents know, we're 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 working hard to get that position field to give some relief to that, to those classes.
Oh, the fifth grade class, I, yes, sir. We have been working very hard. In fact, I will share this. So it's not a a challenge unique to the Boys Integrity Academy. We thought we had found um a teacher that was willing to make a transition from another position where she was and come and uh teach for us. And she had accepted and we got a text uh the morning after her interview. And she said where she was, even though she was looking to relocate. She said she went in that morning. She was a third grade teacher at her um, the school where she is now. She went in that morning and she said her teammate, it was just a two-man team, her teammate had abruptly resigned. And in good conscience, she could not transition at this time and leave that school and those scholars without a third grade teacher. So um I commend her for her commitment and integrity, but it also helped me to see that it is not a challenge unique uh to the Boys Integrity Academy. It is a challenge in our nation of teacher shortages of highly qualified teachers. So, yes, we are working to uh decrease the size of the fifth grade classes by trying to hire another teacher. And we have had a couple of people that we've interviewed that we really like. And we're just, things just have not quite worked out and we want to make sure we get the right person. So we are still working actively trying to add an additional teacher to the fifth grade to reduce those class sizes.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Next slide.
Next slide, please. Thank you. Okay, we're going to talk about tutorials now. Um, and this was another question that we had, and I've kind of spearheaded this. I started a pilot program for about eight days with some of our third, our fourth and fifth graders, third, fourth and fifth graders, uh just to get how we're going to make this happen. And so now I'm ready to take the next step. I've talked with our leadership team about it in terms of the tutorial process. So starting in January, um probably the day after when we come back from the King holiday, we are going to be doing an expanded uh uh tutorial uh process uh that will that will allow us to uh take advantage of the op- of the options uh for our students. So you can sign up on the website. Uh, the area in which you can do that for is for uh Monday and Tuesday, which will be two days a week for four hours. And then another group will be Wednesday and Thursday. And we're talking about the K to five group at the elementary school level. The middle school will have an invite that will go out and will be different for your tutorial, which will start on the 13th of January. But for the group in our elementary school, whether you're in aftercare or not, we will have a tutorial program that will be implemented. Uh, and we want to make sure that everybody has a chance to sign up for that. So the signing up will be done uh in uh in groups. The first group will be uh Mondays and Tuesdays, if you can do that. Or you can sign up for Tues- uh for Wednesday and Thursday. And we'll take and we'll do math and English in those tutorial programs. And so we tell you right now, you can go to the website. It's on our front page at theboysintegrityacademy.org. We're going to ask you to sign up by January the 10th uh so that we can get those groups together and make that happen. So everybody, please go to that website. The middle school will get a specific invitation. So this is for kindergarten through fifth grade tutorial. If you're in aftercare, you still would need to sign up uh because you still have aftercare for the three days. But you can sign up for that tutorial for those two days. It'll be after school until 6:00 PM. The directions are there, but we will implement this program. This is something that you all have asked for. Uh, we already have an an additional program that is ongoing, but this will be the tutorial that will be given for all of you to kind of be a part of to uh to get us where we need to be. So I wanted to make sure that I share that with you. It is on the website. Uh, it is a program for everybody uh in that K to five area is what will be put in in place. So if there are any uh other questions about that, uh you can go to the website and see it. But I wanted to make sure that we talked about that and put it in place uh so that everybody has a chance to do that. Was part of the questions, when would that be? And so we're giving that and making that announcements for everyone. So, next slide, please. And also, um uh before we go that, we're also looking at for the summer enrichment program. Before I introduce uh uh to to maybe partner with Clayton County Public School for some type of summer program that we'll be looking into as well as a part of of what we're doing. So I wanted to make sure that we got that announcement uh based on the um on on the the people that have come to the table uh and and asked us questions about enhancing the academic strides of our children. So that being said, our middle school uh uh principal, Mr. Scott, if you would um uh please go ahead, sir. And I know you're working the presentation at the same time and you and your team, okay?
All righty.
And Ms. Jackson, if you can help, make sure you unmute his team members as they go forward. All right. Thank you. All right, Mr. Scott.
Thank you all so much. Thank you, Ms. Jackson. Good evening, board members, parents and stakeholders. I'm super excited to bring some updates about DIA Middle, where eagles fly and eagles soar. I'm putting back upfront our vision and our mission again. I constantly remind our leadership team that we are working to prepare students to compete globally. Prepare students to compete globally. Key emphasis on preparing. We have to make sure that our students have what's needed so that they can actually be prepared to compete and not just compete against those that are in the classroom with them or with our um school district or beyond our school district, but also globally. And then with our mission, we want to make sure that our scholars are leaving us confident and inquisitive, confident and inquisitive. So every time we meet and we discuss events, we discuss our next step with our instructional practices. Everything has to go back to us preparing students to compete globally and ensuring that our scholars are confident and inquisitive lifelong learners. I'll meet our team. I am the prime principal of DIA Middle. Our assistant principals are Ms. Rutledge and Mr. Lewis, and our school counselor is Mrs. Hunt. We will have some data presented to you guys tonight by our very own academic coach, Dr. Hetson. Um, Dr. Hetson, hopefully you're unmuted at this time, followed um by Ms. Rutledge, and this will give us some academic set of glances.
All right. So as you all know, at the beginning of every year, great afternoon, I'm Dr. Hudson. At the beginning of every year, we take the MAP, which is a measure of academic progress. And at that time, a goal is established based on the data for each student. And so as you're looking at the chart that's on the screen, this chart is telling us how our students performed, how did they meet their growth goal? And the first for sixth grade, we had for reading, we had 55 of our students met their growth goal. And also, we had 26 of our students that did not meet their goal, but they made growth. And that's for reading. Also for math, we had 48 students met their growth goal. And 34 of those students did not meet their goal but had growth. If we go to seventh grade, for seventh grade, we had uh 20, 51 of our students met their growth goal in the reading and 28 met their growth goal in the um, I mean, did not meet their growth goal but had growth. And in math, we had 31 met their growth goal and 16 did not meet their growth goal but had growth. For eighth grade, eighth grade tests in every subject. Um, we have reading, we have math and we have science. For reading, we had 16 of our students met their growth goal and seven of them had growth but did not meet their goal. For math, 43 of them met their growth goal and 17 of them had growth but did not meet their goal. And for science, 43 met their growth goal and 12 did not meet their growth goal but had growth. And that's all of the MAP data. Back to you, Mr. Scott. Mr. Scott?
They had to, they had, yeah, they had to get me unmuted. And so as you can see, we have some work um that we have to do here at the middle school, especially in the area of reading and the area of literacy. Our students, they look at those passages and if they're alone, they just automatically um try to quickly read through them or they're not reading through them and they're just choosing anything. And so our focus right now is helping our students build the stamina, right, to actually uh do those uh the read and and the quick read and look for those key um things within the text to help them to derive to the correct answer. And so that is, that's uh one of the things that we're currently working on to address our scores in literacy. They get those passages and they are ready to uh make a run for it. And so, parents, um you're going to see how you can support us in this effort so that we can address um the deficiencies in the areas of literacy. And so now we're going to move to next steps because we have this data and we have to do something about this data. And so we are labeling this targeted support. Now that we know the areas of deficiency, we see why our students need support. Now it's time for us to make sure that we're targeting support and we're getting them exactly what they need. And these are the different methods that we're using to get them this targeted support. Ms. Rutledge?
All right. So in order for us to target these um academic concerns that we have, first of all, we have what we call the RIT block. In our RIT block, we are focusing on our students' data that they received from the MAP scores that they took. Uh, we use those scores and that data from the test, and it shows us exactly what those students need to work on. So we're able to work on things that they have deficits in and we're able to close those gaps and make sure that they are receiving small group and direct explicit instruction that tailor, that is specifically tailored to their needs. Uh, we're also working on the standards that the students will see the most on their GMAAS testing. So we just want to make sure that they are very familiar with those heavily weighted standards. Uh, we also have the after-school enrichment remediation coming up that you heard Mr. Kaysan speak of. Um, middle school, we will be launching that in January. Um, the students will be able to work in small class sizes and receive really explicit focused instruction to help them with their content areas where they may struggle. Um, the program is going to aim to strengthen their essential skills and just reinforce their confidence, understanding in those core subjects. Um, and so you will receive further details about our tutorial program really, really soon. And again, it will begin in January. At the middle school, we have some advanced ninth grade courses that the students are taking. Um, and so to make sure that those students are successful, we are going to be launching a um study hall, a ninth grade study skills class for them. This course is going to provide them with, again, some small group instruction. It's going to target on those ninth grade standards and skill. We're going to support them with their learning. So if there's anything that they may still be struggling with within those advanced classes, we're going to make sure that we hone in on that and target those things and make sure that they get the help that they need so that they are able to master all of those ninth grade content um skills. That smaller group setting is going to make sure that we're able to individualize it. So when it's time for them to take those end-of-course classes, each and every one of those students will be able to be successful. And then last but not least, we do have our E P instruction at the middle school. So with that, we have some highly qualified teachers who push into the classrooms and they provide assistance to those students to help them with content mastery. Um, those teachers are also providing some specialized interventions for those students. And so those students are receiving those interventions multiple times during the week. At the end of the week, those teachers do progress monitor those students to keep track of their understanding of those skills. And as they track the progress, they're able to move our students closer and closer to um content mastery. So these are just a few of the initiatives that we have um in place and that we're working on at the middle school. And we're really hoping that these tailored learning experiences will get our students exactly where they need to be.
Thank you, Ms. Rutledge. And what we shared was just some raw data for our uh MAP assessment. We are still in the midst of getting all of our students tested. We had students absent and different things of that nature. And so when we have our um data analysis meeting at the next board meeting, we'll have those final um percentages to present to you guys. At this time, we'll have Mr. Lewis with some athletic updates.
Well, good afternoon, DIA families. Hopefully you have, you are having a great evening thus far. Uh, there's so many great things happening over at our middle school with all of our staff, all of our coaches and our athletic department. We are doing some magnificent things. Our coaches are working really hard with our scholars. Uh, we uh finalized our fall sports season in October. Our volleyball team, as well as our flag football team, both had the opportunities to compete for championships. Um, they did an amazing job. I am so proud. As well as the rest of our uh middle school are so proud of the the hard work and the diligence that the coaches and the student athletes put forth in those seasons. Uh, right now, we're actively engaged in our winter sports, which is girls' and boys' basketball. We have two girls' basketball teams and two boys' basketball teams, as well as JV and varsity cheer. Again, they're doing a wonderful job. They had a a successful weekend this past weekend. I think out of the four games that were played, we took home the victory for three of those games. And not only are our coaches um investing in the athletics, but they are really working diligently with our student athletes to enhance their their overall life skills. Um, they're, they're just really, we've been getting an amazing uh feedback from our communities, from our from our parents about how our student athletes are doing. So I encourage you, if you have any time, just come on out and uh support your DIA athletics program. We uh compete usually on a Saturday um in the PB uh PSG um in the PSG League. Uh, the, the app is available, but if you're interested in um getting a schedule, just uh contact our, our front desk and they'll make sure that you get whatever you need to come on out to our games.
Thank you, Mr. Lewis. And as you can see, uh, we are receiving the trophies this year. This is our first year with a flag football trophy and a volleyball trophy. Things are moving in the right direction. As you know, as we ended last year, our um scholars was able to outperform the state in many areas academic. Um, Lee, and this year, we also have the athletics as well, and so things are really moving in the right directions as we continue to show forth um all the great things that's happening at the Boys Integrity Academy. And so now we're gonna move into some club achievements. Um, this past weekend, our robotics team had the pleasure of competing in the uh first Lego League competition. Um, this competition had people from all over metro Atlanta, some private teams, some um teams from public schools and charter schools. And I am proud to say that our school left out with the win for the best performance award. And that best performance award mean that when the robot was on the table, the robot was able to perform every task um to the best of its ability against all of the other teams that competed. So congrats to our robotics team. This is the first year since I've been here that they were able to bring home this award. And I am super excited to say Georgia Tech emailed them and stated that they will advance to regionals. And so we're super excited about our robotics team. Ms. Rutledge, if you would share a little bit about our C-SPAN national competitions?
So our students compete um in what's called C-SPAN Student Camp, and that is a national video documentary competition. It encourages our students to reflect on the world that they live in and to just think critically about issues that they feel affect their community and our nation. Um, this is our third year participating. Um, it's a very rigorous um competition, um but our students are up to the challenge. Um, it covers a variety of the Georgia performance standards as they have to do research. Um, they have to create their own scripts, charts, um conduct interviews. So again, it just covers a myriad of the Georgia performance standards. And so not only are our students being challenged academically, but they're also being challenged creatively because they have to present a very quality um well-presented project. So we're really excited. Hopefully we get a win this year.
Hopefully so, hopefully so. And Dr. Hetson, if you will, touch on the hardest math problem.
So the hardest math problem is an annual competition that is presented every year for middle school math students. There is three phases to this competition in which the students are um the first phase, if they pass the first phase by getting the answer correct for each grade level that they compete in, then they're moved to the next phase of the competition. So there's three phases. By the third phase, if they get to that level of that third phase and they answer the question correctly, then they are awarded a prize at the end, which will be, the timeline is around May. So the announcement will be, will be made in January for those who have passed that first phase. So as you know, we're preparing our students to complete globally against other students. This is a national program, not a local program. So they're competing against students from all across the country. And the problems are very rigorous, is not for the faint of heart. They have to, they've been working since September sixteenth to complete these problems. They were registered. And we just submitted all of their answers on December thirteenth, and we're looking forward to hearing how our students have fared. So I look forward to sharing that information with you all.
We're super excited because um this was our first year having the Scripps National Spelling Bee. I told you, everything that we're doing at the middle school has to go back to the vision and the mission. And so we are preparing them to compete globally. So as you can see, the different competitions listed. And so this year is our first year with the Scripps National Spelling Bee. So this is not just within DIA, but then they compete against those that have won the Schools of Belenbee in Clayton County, and then um all of the surrounding counties at the regional level. And so we would like to congratulate Ryan Bovian. He um was the first-place winner for our school-wide spelling bee, and he will now advance to the regional competition. And so we're just super excited for our DIA scholars as they continue to show forth all the great things that's taking place at DIA Middle. Ms. Rutledge, if you would speak a little bit about our Beta Club and SGA?
All right, um, we have our Beta Club at the middle school. This is our second year having them chartered. Um, Beta Club is a National Honor Society, and so their four pillars are leadership, achievement, character, and service. And so we just work with the students on different activities and making sure that they become well-rounded, productive citizens. Um, this year, we had the pleasure of um attending the online portion of the Georgia Convention. Um, so again, we didn't go in person, but we were able to do the online portion. And so our students were able to compete in a variety of competitions. Uh, with it being the online competition, I'm able to see the results. However, I do have to wait for everyone else's results to come back to see how we placed. And so you just have to keep in mind that they are competing with all Beta Clubs all across the state of Georgia. But I'm feeling really, really good about this competition because we had some students who only missed one question, five questions, eight questions, things of that nature. So I'm very, I'm feeling very confident that I will have some good news for the Boys Integrity Academy when we return in January. Um, our SGA Student Government Association, we have students who work with the leadership team at the school. They voice the concerns of their peers, and they challenge um the rules and the things that we have in place. We challenge them to give us quality reasons for why they have these concerns, why should these changes be made? And so we're basically just showing them how to be able to advocate for themselves and give themselves a voice in a respectful manner. Um, and so we're just working this year. They have some activities coming up. We have new leadership in place. Um, our new SGA president and secretary just had a meeting with Mr. Scott last week. And so we'll be meeting very soon to plan out some things for the twenty twenty-five school year.
Awesome. And if you will, um, our first year with the um Beta Club, we actually were able to receive the, was it the service award, Ms. Rutledge?
Yes, we did. We received a service award, and we also received um we're America School of Mary.
Awesome, awesome. So great things are happening. We're very proud of our scholars. Of course, we push academics, but we want our scholars to be well-rounded. So as we continue to push instruction in the classroom, we wanna make sure that we're providing opportunities for them to compete in different areas um of their interest. And so some of our students are in the robotics, some are in the band, some of them are in the Beta Club and or SGA. But they are definitely finding their voice, believe me, um at our town hall meetings and with the meetings with our Student Government Association. Um, they are definitely finding their voice, and they are advocating for their peers, and we're super excited about their growth. And we're super excited to see them um walk into the, the leader that they truly are. And so focusing on middle school communication, yep. Um, our students are in middle school. Parents, wanna just make sure we clear, I know I made this clear at the beginning of the year. We communicate through Infinite Campus. And so when it comes to how's my child doing in class, we wanna make sure that we're checking Infinite Campus, that we have the alerts on, parents, because our teachers um are mandated to post a minimum of two grades a week. And so if you're not seeing um grades posted, please reach out. Please reach out kscott@diak8.org if you're not seeing grades posted. But as far as the assignments goes, we communicate through Infinite Campus. And so you're able to see where your child stands in the class, which assignments your child did well on, which assignments caused, you know, your child grades to maybe drop. You wanna make sure that you are following Infinite Campus. And sometimes you're not seeing the grade because your child has not turned in the assignment yet, and our teachers are trying to be a little lenient. And so it's not so much that their teachers are not doing their job, it's the fact that your child has not turned in the assignment, and we need that assignment, so it's just not a zero sitting in the gradebook. And so let's make sure that students are getting those assignments turned in. But once again, if you're noticing, hey, I'm not seeing grades posed, please feel free to reach out via email. Another way we communicate is through the PBIS app. You're able to send um teachers messages through that and also just different things that's taking place. Um, at DIA Middle, it's communicated through the PBIS app and also through the email and text thread that comes from our admin office. Last but not least, we sent out our newsletters, they're bi-monthly. And so our latest newsletter covers the month of October and November. So if you will, go to our DIA website, and you'll be able to see under Eagle News where all of our newsletters are posted. Great things are happening, and we're super excited about it. Um, we just ask that you continue to partner with us as we continue to move our students um towards the role of proficiency and being distinguished. Upcoming events, well, our Ready Test then will take place January ninth through the tenth. Um, parents, go ahead and just screenshot this. If your child is in the middle school, this is for middle school only at this moment. Um, our Ready Test then will take place January ninth through the tenth. Our MLK Parade will be at Fayette County High School, January twentieth, twenty twenty-five. We will have our family STEM night and Science Fair celebrated January twenty-third, twenty twenty-five, and that's the night where you're able to come out, engage in some STEM experiments, and also you have the opportunity to judge, be one of the judges for the Science Fair. And then we are super excited to have our first House Rally. This is our first year with House. We adopt a house to build community within our school. We wanna make sure that everyone in the building has the opportunity to know everyone in the building and just build relationships because sometimes it's, it's tough, right? Um, going to a school and you really don't have a relationship with anybody, you really don't wanna go. We want our students to want to be there, and then we get them to a place where they want to learn. And so um House has been going very well, but we have House meetings um monthly where our students in sixth, seventh, and eighth grade are blended, and they're able to come together and discuss different um socio-emotional learning topics and compete on various competitions, whether it's a STEM competition or just um any other competition that's presented during that particular month. And so we will have a House Rally bowling competition. This is where the houses will compete for the bowling trophy. Um, parents, we're asking that you come out and support your students and support our house. We utilize the funds from this fundraiser to continue to um support our kids with incentives during the spring semester because this semester, when I tell you we've had so many pizza parties and this party and that party for all of our um houses that have won the competitions. And so now it's time for us to go ahead and have this bowling competition and refresh the pot, if you will, so that we can go forth and continue to incentivize our kids in the spring semester. So this will take place at Pinestikes. The information is on our website um under the school store. Please go ahead and purchase your ticket to our House Rally Bowling Competition. It's gonna be a wonderful night for parents, students, and staff. And that concludes our presentation. At this time, I'll pass back over to you, Mr. Kason.
Thank you, Mr. Scott. We're gonna go to the uh elementary school version, and then, parents, please uh stay with us. I appreciate your patience. This is something that uh you all have asked for. We wanna continue to give kind of the state. Thank you for the middle school. After uh the elementary school presentation, I'm gonna come back with uh our uniform uh information. A very important fundraising challenge for our elementary school. Uh, and we wanna show you some buildings. We wanna show you the middle school expansion and what we're gonna do at Fountain of Faith and then futuristically. And then we wanna talk about the holiday uh program that's coming up on Thursday night. So stay with us, and at this point, I'm gonna turn it over to Dr. Youssef and her team uh for the elementary.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you all for being here. Um, I won't delay. I will go on into the presentation, so Ms. Jackson, you can advance the slide. Of course, we always, as Mr. Scott said, and I'm sure Mr. Kason and Dr. Payne have reiterated, our mission and vision is why we're here, is why we're showing up each day. And so you will see that throughout the presentation and throughout the work that we do each day. All dots connect back to our mission and vision. The ultimate goal of all of our work is to make sure that your scholars leave us and they are competently prepared to compete and exist wherever they land, be that in the United States of America or abroad. Uh, please meet our lovely, fabulous, dynamic, absolutely gorgeous admin team, myself, Dr. Youssef, the elementary principal. Um, Dr. Jones, I am excited to announce that she just recently concluded her doctoral work, our kindergarten and first-grade assistant principal. Dr. Gilbert, second and third-grade assistant principal, and Mrs. Jackson, our fourth and fifth-grade assistant principal. Teachers, what, I mean, parents, excuse me, I do ask any other stakeholders that you take a moment to take a picture of this slide. Um, one of the things that will improve our ability to rapidly get to you is reaching out to the right person for the right thing. So if you're a kindergarten and first-grade parent, you would like to reach out to Ms., to Dr. Jones to be able to get your answer the quickest. If you're a second and third-grade parent, Dr. Gilbert, so on and so forth. Um, and then after you've spoken to those ladies, I'm always, of course, uh readily available, and you can also reach out to me as well. You can go on, Ms. Jackson. So just a news flash for parents. I think this is important because one of the things that I want parents to always be able to do in all stakeholders is to know what's the, what are the right questions to be asking, and what information do I really need to know to be a, a very well-informed stakeholder? So the, there are four major assessments that we, we, we utilize to stay on top of how children are doing in our school. And so number one and two, our Ready and MAP, these tests are important. And parents, I encourage you to frequently ask about this. These two tests are taken three times a year. And the reason why I encourage you to ask about these assessments when they are taken, they're usually taken between August and September, December, January, and then right about April and May, because these assessments, we talked about competing globally. The Georgia Milestones, which we'll talk about in a moment, is secluded to Georgia. Our Ready and MAP give you a comparison of your scholar nationally. And this is what you wanna be able to see when my child is compared to scholars outside of the state of Georgia, how are they performing? The other thing that you wanna know about these tests is that they are adaptive. This is also important because that means that these tests are changing to find out very specific information about your child. So that means if your child keeps getting answers right, this test is intensifying in rigor. The questions are increasingly getting difficult. If your child is getting question, questions wrong, then these tests will uh take those questions and scaffold them down. And so it's going to give us a very, very targeted and specific pathway for your child. And so I always tell parents, be empowered, ask about our Ready, ask about MAP assessments so that you have information to know about your scholar um on a larger scale. Standards mastery is also something that you want to ask about because the children are tested biweekly. Standards mastery, sometimes it's um spoken of as common assessments. We utilize Progress Learning, which is a platform that's purchased through the school. This assessment gives us information on shorter uh intervals of instruction. So Dr. Youssef just finished teaching on decimals. We take an assessment on decimals. And now I'm able to see how Laquita just performed on this standard. So now the teacher is more readily able to adapt instruction. Prepare for small groups to make sure that I can remediate if Laquita has a deficit, or I can accelerate if Laquita has demonstrated mastery. So these assessments, again, our Ready and MAP, three times a year, standards mastery is biweekly. So parents, feel free to ask, send messages in PBIS so that we can um be able to give you information. There was a, a parent meeting, and some parents asked about uh a formality of sharing this information. And so the admin team and I are working through what could this look like for parents to get information regarding those standards mastery assessments? Because the ultimate goal is a partnership. We don't wanna just be the holders of information. We want you to have the information to be able to support us at home. And of course, the last test is the Georgia Milestones for third, fourth, and fifth graders. This is a state-driven assessment where the scholars will test to give us information on how much do they know for the standards that Georgia is asking us to teach them in a year's interval? You can go to the next slide. And so now we talked about our Ready, and again, I wanna continue to stress that our Ready gives us a national view. And so you can see at a glance, this is the content of reading, and this test was taken at the very beginning of the school year. And so I want us to, I, I put this information in the slide because it is important to me that parents have a realistic view of where we are, where we started, what we're working with. Um, and so you can see that um there's some green, which means, and of course, you always want green is, if you're ever curious or wanna know, what do I wanna see? Green is always a good thing. Um, and so you can see what our percentages landed. You can see our um kindergarten and second grade landed at an equal amount. Um, and so you can see what our percentages landed. You can see our um, kindergarten and second grade landed at an equal amount. Um, a twenty-three percent, very huge shout out to third grade coming in with over half of their grade level being in the green for the content of reading. What we can also see is that as we advance K through fifth grade, we see an increasingly large red bar. And in education, when you're looking at data, in most instances, I'm not gonna say all because I try not to create misconceptions. But in most instances, red is an indication that there is um, some area of opportunity, some area of growth. And so you can see for our fifth grade scholars who will be matriculating to the middle school. And so we're working to uh, put some things in place to, to close these gaps. Sixty-three percent of those scholars performed in the red. And so when they're in the red, that could possibly mean that there are one or two grade levels behind. And if you look at the bar very closely, you can see that there's a little diagonal line going through the bar. And so those scholars that fill in that bracket are two grade levels or more behind. But this gives you a very quick at a glance view of where the scholars started the year when we took our already assessment in reading. You can go to the next slide, Ms. Jackson. This is the area of math. Um, I'm, if you are a math person and your brain does numbers like mine, you can see the very distinct difference between the performance of scholars in reading than in math. Um, the reverse of what I heard Mr. Scott mentioned for math in the middle school where reading was an area of opportunity. We can see that math is the, the largest area of opportunity at the elementary school. Um, I do want to shout out that kindergarten, those parents that came in, there are no children in red. I, I hope you noticed that in kindergarten for math and reading. And so I had a conversation with Dr. Jones, who was our first, I mean kindergarten and first assistant principal, and said our charge is to make sure that no red shows up and to make sure that that yellow turns to green. And so we've been looking at the data and analyzing it and identifying who the children are in these color brackets. And that we've actually had a data analysis session with the teachers today to look at their map ready. Uh, map scores, but as you can see again, over half of the grade level in fifth grade uh, being in that red, um, same thing for fourth grade. So you can see our third, fourth, and fifth grades performing in the area of, of math is an opportunity for growth. And so, um, we'll talk about some things that we're doing, but I, I promise you I'll have a very much more specific and targeted plan after this, this winter break. You can go to the next slide, Ms. Jackson. This while already was beginning of the year, this map data is actually our middle of the year. So they took um, map assessment at the middle of the year. And if you look down at the bottom of the slide, I put the percentiles key there. So you can see, if you see red, that means that the grade level was in the first through the twentieth percentile. And so at that point, it should, your brain, your eyes probably zero in on fourth grade math. Seeing that they're in that nineteenth percentile, what does this mean? This means that of all the scores that were calculated, doesn't mean that every child in fourth grade performed in the red, but the sum total of the performance of fourth grade landed us there. So you can see again for kindergarten, fifty-ninth percentile, very close to kindergarten's overall average being green. Um, and so I tell parents, I tell teachers, I tell leaders, I tell everybody. Um, our goal is to, to not just um, focus on the children who are in the red, but to make sure that those who are performing well are also growing. And so you can see language arts percentiles as well. Uh, but this gives you an overall view. One of the things that I, I say candidly, um, but I say with confidence is that we have work to do. We have work to do. Um, I had that very courageous conversation with my admin team because I have no problem rolling up my sleeves and getting the work done because we know what to do. Um, and so I'm excited about what we'll be able to share at the end of the year and as we progress through the school year. Uh, but these numbers don't, don't frighten or alarm me because I understand the work. You can go to the next slide, Ms. Jackson. And so now I'm going to pass the torch to my amazing admin team. And parents, I, I want you to really listen closely because I spoke to you about where we are. I gave you our reality. I gave you our authentic numbers. And so now what we're giving you is what we call a vision of excellence. And so if your scholar is kinder in first grade, I, I want you to hear, um, what is it that my child should be able to do? And then the assistant principals are gonna share, what are some things, what are some things that I can do at home with my child that will help build and enhance those numbers that you just saw in that already in map data?
Well, good afternoon, families again. So this is Kinder First and it's giving you a snapshot of what they should know at the end of their grade dance. Recognize and understanding letters, the sounds, and simple words that will be like your C V C words. Develop their phonics skills, including decoding words and recognizing sight words. Um, read simple text with increased fluency and comprehension. And when we say fluency, that does not mean reading fast, but that you're reading with the understanding and at a steady pace. I always tell teachers, we don't want them reading like a robot, okay? That's what that means. Identify main ideals and details and stories, retail events, and engage in discussion about text. For writing, both style, both grade days should be able to form letters correctly and write simple words and sentences. They should be able to express ideals through drawings, words, and short stories. They need to begin to use basic punctuation, capitalization, and spacing in their writing. Um, organize their thoughts into complete sentences and short paragraphs, adding descriptive details over time. For math, our babies need to understand numbers and their relationships, including counting, um, comparing basic addition and subtraction, recognize and describe patterns, shapes, and positions. Solve simple word problems using objects, drawings, or numbers, and develop an understanding of measurement, time, and basic data representation. So what can you do to help them? So for reading, listen, you should be reading with your scholars daily. Listen, we know we have a long day, but at least spend ten to fifteen minutes reading books out loud and discussing stories. It can be whatever their choice is. It can be a comic book. It can be a book online, but let's read with our scholars. Play word games, practice recognizing sight words, rhyming words or sounding out words. When you're driving, it can be on the way home. When you see restaurants, what's that word? What is that letter? What is that sound? Those are type, um, examples of word games. Ask questions about stories. When you read with your child or to your child, ask them to retell the story in their own words. Talk about their favorite part to build comprehension skills. For writing, let's encourage um, writing for fun. Provide opportunities, the right grocery list. If you're going to the store, you want to help mom, want to help dad, write the list, let them help you. Have them writing notes. Write notes to your scholar. These are all things that are free that we can do around at home. Draw and write stories about their day. Draw me a picture and, and give me a caption of, I'll write what you said you did. Uh, practice letter formation. Parents, we need them to use pencils. You can use chalk. You can even use finger, finger paint. We want to build their fine motor skills so that their penmanship isn't um, is better for writing, okay? Um, help with journaling. Encourage your child to keep simple journals where they can draw pictures and write sentences. Uh, is it, I said a sentence or two, but sentences about their day. For math, you can use everyday activities for counting. You can count objects like their toys. You can count their snacks, um, to reinforce, reinforce number skills. If you're walking, how many steps are we taking? How many stairs did you go up? Things like that. Play with shapes and patterns. Use household items um, to build and identify shapes or create simple patterns. Practice basic addition and subtraction. Use real-life scenarios like sharing snacks or toys to practice adding and subtracting in a fun, practical way. I'm gonna pass the baton to Dr. Gilbert.
Good evening, everyone, parents and staff. I will present on what second and third grade scholars should know at the end of their grade level. So we're gonna begin with readings. Uh, they need to read and comprehend grade-level literature and informational texts independently. They need to be able to read grade-level text fluently with accuracy and understanding. Dr. Jones just spoke on that as well. Uh, they need to be able to understand story structure, including characters, setting, and plot. Uh, when you go to the movies, if you go to the movies, uh, why don't you have them, you know, ask questions. Who were the main characters? Where, where did the setting take place? You know, what was the plot? Things of that nature. Um, identifying main idea and supporting details. That's a big one. Uh, understanding figurative language and word relationships. For writing, you have using correct capitalization, punctuation, and spelling. Uh, we have writing informative opinion and narrative pieces with a clear focus and logical sequence. Um, planning, drafting, and revising uh, the opinion, informative, and narrative text with clear structure and conducting short research projects and use information from various sources. For math, we have solving addition and subtraction problems within one hundred. Understanding place value to one thousand, measuring lengths using appropriate tools, uh, multiplying and dividing within one hundred. Uh, understanding and solving word problems using all four operations. And last but not least, understanding fractions as numbers and fractions on a number line. So what can you do at home? Ms. Jackson, did you skip a story?
You, you can go ahead, Dr. Gilbert, with what you can do at home. We'll go back to your slide.
Alright, so what you can do at home, parents, is um, uh, Dr. Jones stated, read at least ten to fifteen minutes. Well, here with second and third grade, I would suggest taking a step further and reading fifteen to twenty minutes. Read to them or let them read to you or take turns. Um, ask about whatever book they like to read. Ask questions. You know, what was the main idea of this chapter? Tell me about this chapter in your own words. Um, also, you have uh, YouTube. If you, if you're a scholar, um, wants to get in the habit with vocabulary, put the story on mute and um, enable closed captions so that the words go across the screen so that they're seeing the words that go along with the story. Uh, for writing, you have uh, CNN ten dot com for kids. It is um, very kid-appropriate for current events that are taking place around the world. You can access it um, anywhere. Um, mainly on YouTube. That is li- literally ten minutes long. Once they finish, have them summarize in their own words what did they learn? Okay, so those are little short stories. Um, Dr. Jones stated, writing letters. Have them write letters to family members. You know, start with who's in the home or if you have a, a parent or grandparent out of state or across town. Have them write letters, get in the habit of writing letters. Grocery list, uh, or even um, practicing writing letters, um, pen pals, if you want to, you know, take it international. For math, uh, you can even bring cards into play. You know, I declare war. You know, once they turn a card over, who has the highest number? Okay, to get into comparing numbers, uh, measuring ingredients. Have the babies help you in the kitchen. Get them in the habit of learning how to read recipes and how to measure ingredients, cooking rice and things of that nature. Um, so make it fun. You know, it doesn't always have to be so structured. It could be informal but fun and meaningful. Um, so what they take or learn in the classroom, they can apply it into real-life situations and applications as well. That's all I have, Ms.
Okay.
Alright, I will jump in for fourth and fifth grade. I won't repeat anything. Um, major things that we need to take away for reading for fourth and fifth grade. Um, being able to compare and contrast the complexity of what they have to do as readers changes. So a lot of what they have to do with Dr. Gilbert talked about them, you know, reading, identifying main idea, et cetera. Now they have to be able to do that across multiple texts. So that's where the um, the difference comes in in fourth and fifth grade. Um, they have to compare and contrast themes. You know, they have to be able to look at multiple versions of stories like Cinderella, read the true story of the three little pigs, plus the three little pigs, and compare and contrast the different points of view. Um, the other thing also about writing is that with writing, they have to be able to write using text-based writing.
Dr. Youssef, you want to unmute?
Um, that text-based writing had meaning, they can't just write from their hip. Like when they write opinion writing, it can't be, I think, I feel. It has to be using the sources that they were given to write. Um, and so that's one thing you can practice at um, at home with them, but understand regarding their writing. So on the own, back to what Dr. Gilbert said, flashcards, multiplications. One of the things that could happen for fourth and fifth graders is, you know, when we were children, we wrote in diaries. Let them have little diaries with a little locks on them so that they can go in and, and encourage them to write so that they have the stamina. One of the biggest things that we are finding is that the children just run out of gas when it comes to writing. And so this will build their muscle to be able to write. Um, write scholar, write your scholars back and forth. So that's one thing that I do. I have a thirteen-year-old daughter and she and I'll write her a letter. She'll write me a letter for her thirteen birthday. I actually had my family to write her something for every month of the year over the next twelve months of her life. Um, and so those are different ways where we're incorporating writing and reading. Um, a reading routine is important. Uh, Doc, Mr. Scott, okay, Dr. Scott, I named it. Mr. Scott mentioned um, stamina for reading. And the more they read, the more they read, the better they are going to perform. The more they read, I cannot say it. I cannot say it enough. The more they read, the better they are going to perform academically. Um, Ms. Jackson, you can move along. Communication in the know, you can go ahead. Um, similar things to what Mr. Scott mentioned, we definitely use Infinite Campus. He also mentioned alerts, parents. I am going to encourage you to do that. Again, I mentioned that I have an eighth grader. I also have a first grader. And if they get a grade below a certain number, my phone will ping and it will tell me. And so I encourage you all to be that aggressively monitoring Infinite Campus for several reasons because I always tell teachers, this is the first way you know what your child does and does not understand. But it also gives you the ability to quickly, to quickly message the teacher. Um, I am a parent where once I get those notifications, hey, I see that Zoe received a sixty-nine on blah, 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 blah. And I'm immediately intervening. I'm immediately asking, when is the tutorial day? So please, please, please bombard us, bombard the admin office to get your credentials for Infinite Campus. Um, and teachers are responsible for putting those grades in Infinite Campus. Parents, I'm going to also say this, and I know the teachers may not like to hear it, but I want to know if you are not seeing grades in the gradebook because that is important for you and for the children to know how they are performing. That is fair and that is an ethical practice. Uh, PBS is also something that is utilized to communicate with parents. Um, Google Classroom, I also encourage parents to log in with your children's credentials, even if you can't, you know, work it out with your own. I log into Google Classroom as my child to see what she has submitted. What has she done? What grade did she make? What did her teacher say back to her? Um, those are things that, that keep you in the know, keep you informed. You're gonna be able to go in and see, oh, let me look at this paragraph that you wrote. Um, conferences are also important. Ask for them. And be empowered to ask for them. It is your right as a parent to ask for a conference with myself, with an assistant principal, with the dean of students, with the teacher, with whomever you need to speak to to make sure that your children are getting a quality educational experience. Um, last thing on communication, I wanted to provide a point of clarification surrounding the U-Pass. And again, I always tell parents, I love Q and As because the reality of the situation is sometimes we don't know until you tell us. So thank you. Um, your U-Passes, we are going to clean up the process of making sure that there's a Thursday cash-in process with the teacher in those school stores. And so then the scholars will come home with a slip. So parents, one of the questions was, well, how do I know if my child has a U-Pass? And so we're going to make sure that those children who have earned U-Passes will come home on Thursdays. And so the parents will know, hey, Laquita's got her slip, so she's able to dress in your own uniform. That's what U-Pass stands for. Um, so that should clarify and clean up that process of understanding U-Passes and um, when your child should be able to actually dress out of uniform on those Fridays. You can go on, Ms. Jackson. A few things on extracurricular activities, parents, I'm going to say this out loud, uh I'm not going to yell it, but please pretend that I am. We hear you. We are working to increase the amount of extracurricular things that the scholars are able to access at the elemen- elementary level. Uh I'm going to highlight um some of the pictures down at the bottom. Um the the young man at the bottom with the trophy was our spelling bee winner. Uh but we also had a spelling buzz, huge shout out to Dr. Jones, um Dr. Gilbert and and the lower elementary crew who advocated for that spelling buzz for kindergarten, first and second graders. And our first brace uh pla- place winner, Mr. Emery, um got him a trophy in second grade as well, um out of Ms. Denson's class. Um we've had a book character parade, you see those scholars with their heads down writing, that was the STEM Day. Um this young lady down at the bottom with that orange balloon, they were working to manufacture that that um that uh float. Um so STEM Day is happening monthly. Um it is, they are getting STEM challenges, this last STEM challenge was for them to craft a holiday float. So they are using the design thinking process, one of the things that we stress with the teachers is do not let them just start building. Make them think, look at their materials, understand their constraints and their parameters, make them draft, then build. Let make them problem solve while they're building, teachers don't do it for them. Teacher, be the facilitator, teacher, ask questions so that critical thinking is actually happening. But also they're learning how to collaborate, they're learning how to have teamwork, they're learning how to troubleshoot, they're learning how to deal with challenges and and work together to come overcome them. Um so STEM Days are happening, happening each month. Um and I believe that you, that too will help to improve the data that we saw because it does require critical thinking. The last thing, huge shout out to Ms. Jenny Jackson, our third through fifth grade counselor. Um yes, we have uh the Beta Club and so I will note that um Ms. Rutledge mentioned it earlier. But it's a academic and character based club with four pillars. And so invitations have been sent home to elementary scholars, membership agreements should have come home to parents. I sat in on a a Beta Club meeting just this week um and congratulated those children, told them, oh, you're following in your principal's footsteps because I was in the Beta Club um. And then the induction, you can mark your calendars for those scholars who did qualify and have been invited, is scheduled for January fourteenth at six o'clock in the evening. Um Ms. Jackson is working where there will be an election of officers and all of that. And there's some service projects that are lined up for that group. And so again, parents, I'm gonna say it out loud, we hear you, we hear you, we hear you and we are responding to you. The last thing is Club Hour. So Club Hour will be starting second semester, the teachers have signed up for clubs that they are willing to sponsor. This will happen each month and it will be during the school hours. Um the children are going to be getting Google Forms where they are going to have voice and choice. I'm gonna shout out Dr. Jones again because she will not let us water down anything for those kindergarten and first grade babies. They're going to fill out a Google Form two and they're going to select their top two choices. Um and based off of the amount, we will then assign them to a club. Some of the examples of the types of clubs that teachers are sponsoring are art clubs, step team, STEM club. There's a gaming masters club, I read the description from the teacher. And so there will not just be electronic games, but they'll also be playing board games because things like Scrabble are not old school. Um these things foster critical thinking, Connect Four, not old school, fosters critical thinking. Um and then Drama Club, so that's just a few of some of the the things that are being offered um extracurricular. Um I look forward to hopefully that being some topics of conversation with that Parent Advisory Board with Mr. Kason so that we can respond to you and make sure that the children at in kindergarten first through through fifth grade are getting some opportunities to do things beyond just academics, and so I'm excited about that. Uh next slide. Our commitment, I'll say this and and I'll 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 do better than it, I'll show you this over time, I'm I'm certain of it. Is to make sure that we're nurturing your scholars, to make sure that the classroom is in a place of engagement that your children are coming home excited to tell you about what they're doing in the classroom. Um I promise you that it will be academically rigorous. And so there may be some times where the child comes home and says, I did not know the answer to that question, but that's all right because we call that productive struggle. Um but we're also committing to making sure that we're building strong character in your co- your scholars. And so again, it's a partnership between you and I, we can't do it alone, I can't do it alone. I tell the teachers and my admin team that all the time and I'm very conscious of it, and so I appreciate you. I need, I need you and I thank you all for your time.
Thank you, Dr. Yusuf.
Thank you, Dr. Yusuf, uh thank you, Team Elementary and and Middle School, uh we appreciate you. Uh we're almost at the end, I promise you will be done by eight thirty, I'm gonna go through this. Uh but I really appreciate the time and there's a lot of information. We may the next time do a breakout session for elementary, middle, but I know some of you have the same. You got kids on both levels, so we gotta always consider that, so. And the questions you've sent in have been phenomenal and I appreciate that. There are a couple of folk that I'm gonna reach out to personally, I explained to Dr. Payne because your your question was very specific. We have called a couple of parents today and we'll do some of that tomorrow as well. Uh school uniforms, after ten years, I can tell you that we are now gonna be moving. The school uniform, School Zone has closed their physical shop in Georgia. And so we're gonna now have a DIA school uniform store that will be located in our complex at our administrative office. We hope to have it up and running in the next thirty days. Uh there'll be an expansive, Mr. Scott, everybody from blazers down to vests to hats to uh all different types of things. In our our basic uniform, you'll hear more about it, but we will now be going to the the school. We'll have our own school set up, which will be in the suites next door to our administrative offices. And we hope that by the end of January to have that up and running so that everybody will be able to uh keep that going. Uh we're gonna keep the prices reasonable, but the sizes also, when we get to middle school, we've got growing children and sizes are important. And I know that we all want our children to look good in school, uh we'll have everything from jackets to all types of things uh from a spirit wear perspective, uh so we wanna make sure that we made that announcement today. That's the first time everybody's hearing it, but we were making that transition and you'll hear more about it as we come. If you had ordered something from School Zone and you do not have that order, you need to contact the administrative office or send Ms. Frida Thomas an email, you know her email address, uh so that we can make sure that we address that with School Zone as they're closing the store here locally, so I wanted to make sure of that. Now I'm gonna talk about something very exciting in terms of the buildings and things that we're doing. Uh but before I get to that, I wanna talk about returning students. Uh you will receive an e- an email this week. Uh we asked that if you're gonna be coming back to DIA, that you reserve your seat and we need to have that in by January tenth because we are starting uh to now market and open up to register for next school year. And our, we opened it up today and right away we got over twenty-five, thirty interest forms. And so we're gonna make sure that if you're a returning student, that you reserve your seat. Uh you don't have to go back through the lottery process, but we need you to make sure by the tenth, we know that we're keeping your seat uh before we start to let other students in to the building. So that will be an email that you'll receive, there'll be a jot form, uh you receive that email tomorrow. Please sign up that you'll be returning or you can also opt out if you're moving or if you're not coming back to say no. But we wanted to make sure that 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 is something that you do and that we have put out there, okay? New students, this is very important for if you have students uh on in your family that are now to be ki- kindergartners and you already have a student in school, uh we have what's called a sibling priority. But you need to fill out the new student, which is now on our website under the pre-enrollment tab, that is open, it opened today. Uh you must fill out for each student that you'd like to attend or your neighbors or anybody that you talk about in terms of 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 attending DIA that they need to fill out online for each student. Please, even if you are returning, you have to fill out the new student enrollment form for your kindergartner or whatever grade level you have to get uh what's called uh sibling priority, which means that they would be admitted when we do our admissions process in early March. So I wanna make sure that everybody knew that, that that was kinda set up to go, all right? Main Street Campus Expansion, this is important before I go to the next slide. Our middle school is growing, we're putting some things together because we've got all the babies in the K through fifth grade are coming into the middle school zone. And I wanted to show you, we've talked about it, uh we're in process with the architects and putting all the pieces together. But I wanted to give you some examples of what that's gonna look like uh for those that are coming into middle school and for future students. So if you can go to the next slide, please, this is the aerial view. Uh you can see uh where the Main Street Campus is now, uh it's in the white building, the four-story building right there. And then you could see we purchased the property uh down, so students will have a covered walkway walk to get to this complex here. It's a little bit different than, uh and we're gonna show you in a moment, but I wanted you to see that that is underway. Uh the architects have been out, the construction site uh will start and get underway and we're gonna get this started as soon as possible for the earliest possible opening, but we now have it, all the funding is there and we're putting the pieces together to get this building up. Uh and it'll house, next slide, please. Wanted to kinda give you the look of that building, isn't that a beautiful concept with the trees and everything around it? To get kinda give you like that aha moment uh of school, it's a one-story building. Uh and uh we'll go ahead and go to the next slide. And Dr. Payne, if you can kinda talk through kinda what we have there, this has been worked on by a lot of our teachers and uh Mr. Scott and everything else, and uh go ahead, Dr. Payne, please.
Yes, so this will be like our our connection swings, we'll have our gym, all of our connections classes, art, uh STEM. Um music, we'll have an actual band room with the, we uh the band in the building right next to the art room. All of the, so this will be our our connections hall and we have that nice courtyard there. And so we're very excited about um our expansion as we prepare for those large classes coming up from our elementary school.
Mr. Scott, if we go to the next slide, I need you to s- speak on this so that these parents and families know that it's real, I've been talking about it. I need you to tell the meetings you've been in, what we've seen, and we're gonna get this thing going, please, sir. We gotta let him off of mute, if he's on mute. Okay.
Yes, so e- every single time we go to a meeting, I tell them that we need this building up tomorrow. And so we're super excited to be meeting with the architects. One of the things that um Mr. Kason and Dr. Payne and I agreed upon is that we needed a green space. We need an opportunity for our students to kinda be able to go into a safe place and kinda have some outside learning take place. And so if you notice, the green space here will be an opportunity for our students to kinda get outside and explore and um even have some reflection and journaling time. And so we wanna make sure that uh of course they're in the classroom all day. So the goal is that this connection wing provide a different atmosphere, a different um form of environment for them. So if you notice um the open um and and airy windows for them to kinda see nature and different things of that nature. We're hoping that this is a calming zone for our students and a time for them to refresh and reset before they are engaged again into academics.
And the beautiful thing is our gym, classes, our art, our music have their own space and we don't have to go all over the place to get this done, so we're very excited about it, so that's a wonderful thing. And then now for our elementary school, uh if you go to the next slide, please. Uh I want to be able to, we we're gonna have uh on our, I've signed the paperwork for this, on our fourth and fifth grade campus. Uh I I gotta brag on the elementary school from uh uh two years ago. Uh you all broke the bank in our Double Good Popcorn fundraiser, so we're gonna go through it again. That fundraiser funded the playground at Church Street Campus and also parts of the media center uh that's on our 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 CATA uh three campus. We now embarking upon uh uh raising and you raised for that mission seventy-seven thousand dollars. So Dr. Yusuf, we're gonna challenge in January the Double Good Popcorn fundraiser to break the record. We're hoping to raise eighty thousand dollars, now that's not, you know, Double Good takes half of the the fund. So in order to raise eighty thousand, you gotta sell a hundred sixty thousand dollars worth of popcorn. And they did it two years ago to ru- to seventy-seven thousand dollars in our pocket. But I wanna show you what that's gonna get us, is a remodeled uh grade building, this is gonna be and and the whole elementary school needs to participate because it's kindergarten all the way through to fifth grade. And as those third and second graders come up, you'll have that building, next slide, Mr. Scott, please. And you could see, uh this is, we have this on our middle school campus, we also have it at our our CATA three campus, our Church Street Campus, next slide. But this will be something we would put together for our our uh fourth and fifth grade campus and we need it. Uh we'll be remodeling both the inside and the outside of what we call Mod One. Uh and that's up on the hill, we'll be painting the outside, it meets the the same as our other modulars. But go go through the next slide, but this will be uh the concept that we're putting together for those students that are there so they have a place for this media resource center. And so that fundraiser will come out and be a part of it, the other thing, and go to the next slide, please, uh that we'll be doing at our Church Street Campus, which is now what I call Phase Seven, uh Dr. Yusuf and company outside of this media center at Fountain of Faith, we're gonna be adding uh a gym at Church Street Campus where the first and second graders actually uh come out and get loaded on. So that is down the road, it won't happen this year, but we are in process now uh with our board of putting a gym on that campus so that all of our schools will have uh gymnasiums to be able to go and also media center. So you'll be hearing more about the launch of the fundraiser, uh we'll get plenty of time, it'll be sometime after the after the King Holiday or thereabouts that we'll put out uh the information and we're gonna set that record. And we're gonna bust open uh the Double Good Popcorn thing and go from there, okay? Very good, next slide, please. I got one minute, I wanna thank you for your attention, there should have been a slide in there about our our, uh we probably didn't refresh it uh about our our program uh on Thursday night uh for our elem- uh CATA five school, that's gonna be at uh the school gets out early on that day. Um on Thursday the nineteenth, there'll be no aftercare, we're asking uh uh students to be there at five thirty. Your dresses, I got, we got one question that said, well, what do we wear for different grade levels? Everybody is gonna be in the same uh in the same uni- uh it it's it's red, black, what do we call it? Dr. Payne, festive colors, correct, just whatever.
Festive colors or black and white, whichever you have, we don't want you to have to go out and purchase anything, holiday colors or or black and white. Uh Mr. Scott, can you refresh the uh presentation so we can see if that pops up so they can have the address and information and make sure they have that? For our new parents.
Will be at Light of Joy, we will start promptly at six P M. We ask the students to be there at five thirty, uh we gotta get them lined up, get them in space. And we expect to have a program that'll be done no later than seven fifteen uh and we'll have you on your way. We've got it organized and uh but the problem is, we're gonna start on time. So if you want your children and see them and get it done, and that we do expect a large crowd, every year we have uh upwards of a of of a couple thousand people that attend, uh and we wanna make sure that everybody uh everybody's there, that we start promptly at uh six P M. Our holiday extravaganza on December nineteenth and then on December twentieth is an ELBC day. So that's work from home day and assignments will be done in Google Classroom. So wanted to make sure that we got that done, uh it is time, as I promised you, we'd be finished and over with. Uh Dr. Payne, is there anything else that you need to say, but we're gonna sign off and let folk get baths and kids to bed?
No, sir, I I thank you, uh thank everyone for coming and joining uh this evening and we hope this uh Parent Town Hall meeting was informative and helpful. Uh again, if there were some questions that did not uh get addressed that you uh still have, you can send those to info at thevoiceintegrityacademy.com. Wish everyone a wonderful evening, we look forward to seeing everyone on Thursday at the holiday extravaganza, remember no aftercare and there will be early dismissal that day as well.
Thank you and good night.